The Board now reconvenes this work session meeting of the Plano ISD Board of Trustees in open session at 6:20 PM on March 20th, 2018, at the Plano ISD Administration Center. I'm Ms. Evander, President of the Plano ISD Board of Trustees. We will be conducting our meeting focusing on the district's two major goals. Ensuring the continued improvement in student learning and ensuring the efficient use of resources. Let me introduce my fellow trustees and staff. Seated to my left are Sarah Fonzler. It says interim superintendent. I think you're our superintendent. Pending the 20-day conclusion. Then we have Nancy Humphrey, Board Secretary, trustee Tammy Richards, and trustee Jerry Chambers. Seated to my right, in just a minute, will be Board Vice President David Staley. He'll be walking in in just a second. Trustee Dr. Jorm Solomon, trustee Angela Powell, and Executive Assistant to the Superintendent Board of Trustees Denise Gillespie. This evening, we have an item regarding that it requires closure, which is unusual at a work session, but it's simply related to changing a meeting date. And I'd like to initiate any discussion needed on the request to change the May 2018 board meeting date. Due to end-of-year events, the administration requests that the date be changed from Tuesday, May 8th, to Monday, May 7th. Do we have a motion to approve the meeting date change from May 8th to May 7th?
I move the date to May 7th.
Ann, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. Motion passes. Alright, then remaining items are for information only, and they are related to our budget. But first up will be the compensation plan. And Assistant Superintendent for Employee Services Dr. Beth Brockman will introduce the compensation plan update. Dr. Brockman.
Good evening. Thank you. I would like to take this opportunity to welcome Ann Patton from TASB HR Services back. She's a familiar face, and a friendly face at that, to present our compensation plan briefing for this evening.
Good evening. Oh, what? Good evening. I'm delighted to be back in Plano. Thank you again for having me here. I come every year to just do a brief plan update as I study, help the administrations go through the compensation plan. The first slide is a list of the total salaries that you all sent to me. This is based on the total staff numbers. The total staff includes, is not FTEs, it is full-time, it includes all staff members, so a part-time person's going to count as one. Does not include overtime. It does not include TRS contributions. It does not include vacancies. This is just number of people. So, one thing interesting about this is that your teachers, librarians, nurses, is 66% of the total cost and about 58% of the staff. So, there's more money proportionally being spent on the teachers, which is always a good thing. The next page is the list of the comparison market districts. As you can see, it is in alphabetical order, and it is pretty much Dallas area, Dallas, Fort Worth, but mostly on the Dallas side of Region 11 districts that are your nearest and dearest around you. We switched this about two or three years ago. We at one time looked at other large districts in the state of Texas, and then discussed it for a while because you, the Dallas area has such a big, heavy talent pool, you really weren't recruiting people from Houston, or El Paso, or Brownsville, or any of those places. So, we changed this a few years ago, and I think that's been an improvement for you. And I'm going to let Beth talk about the, why these particular districts were selected.
These districts were selected as actually our competitive market. It is our competitive market because, as you can see from the totals at the bottom of the chart, these are who, these are the districts we lose people to, but we also gain people from. This chart, a couple of important keys, key pieces of information to keep in mind. One, this is all employees. This is not limited to teachers. This is a self-reported piece of information on an exit survey. So, I take it with a grain of salt. This is not something that we go back and verify that they've actually achieved employment in that district. And again, it is not representative of all of our employees that leave or come in a year because it is limited to just our comparison market. We do lose people to other districts in the state and out of state, but once you get out of our general metroplex area, it gets down to one or two, and it's often related to a family move rather than an employee leaving for a salary or a position.
So, this is the teacher market that we look at every year. There is a lot of information on this piece of paper, and so it kind of breaks the PowerPoint rules, but that's okay, because I want you to see the information. It is sorted from highest starting salary to the lowest starting salary. Prosper ISD has asterisks because they did not participate in our salary surveys, so we were able to get their teacher data, but for the other analysis for the other jobs, we did not use them. So, that's why there's asterisks. As you can see, the solid line going across is your starting salary, which is at the top. The orange line is the 75th percentile. The green is the 50th percentile, and the blue is the 25th percentile. Salaries in this, in this area are very, very competitive. This is a very dynamic market. So, you can see that you're, right now, sitting above the 75th percentile, which is, I just want to take a half a second, because when I first started coming to Plano, you were not at the 75th percentile. So, I want to brag on you a little bit because you have been making concerted efforts to get your salaries up to where they're very competitive. And so, it's, that's a, been a big commitment on the part of this board to do that. So, it looks like you've done a really good job. We look at your salaries a little bit differently. Survey, just so that you know, we survey about 120-something different jobs. For teachers, we survey at every five-year increment. Most school districts have step schedules. You do not. You have a pay range for your teachers, and you use it. And it's very, it works for you. Oh, thank you. It works for you, they're giving me instructions here. It works for you beautifully. So, I look at two things for you. I look at where are your current employees paid at each of these five-year increments to compare how, you know, what kind of salaries they could get in other school districts. And then I looked at your new hires to see where, how you are hiring into this pay range. So, your current employees look great. You know, there are 102, 101, 101. You can see, read those all the way across this, all the way across these at the bottom. You can, you can see how, you know, you're within $1,000, and that's just exactly where you want to be. One of the things we noticed this year is that bringing in your new hires, looking at them, they seem to be a little bit suppressed. And so, that is one thing that Beth and the administration here are going to be working on, is making some improvements. And there's another slide a little bit later to concentrate on that. But you can see the, the other pay increases that the other school districts were doing. You gave a 3%. Carrollton Farmer's Branch made a bigger jump this year than they have in the past. But you can pretty much see between 2% and 3% for, for everybody. And that's what I've been running for most of the school districts that I work with, is right now, 2% and 3% for right now.
When we talk about compensation for employees and prospective employees, though, we have to extend beyond just the salary number. One of the things that's, that's becoming a very hot topic of conversation in compensation for educators, of course, is health insurance. So, one of the things requested last year, and we wanted to just include it this year, was a comparison, our market comparison districts, on how we're doing in total compensation. So, again, we're looking at our starting salary, and then in the next column, you can see the benefits contribution. Plano was one of several districts that, for the 17-18 school year, increased the district contribution to the employee benefits, the health insurance benefits for their employees. We also give a December lump sum payment of $500. That's been in place for about the last four or five years. It's, it looked a little different in the beginning, but it's been that flat 500 for the last couple of years. Giving that total compensation package, you can see on the right. Other districts, some do give a December lump sum type payment. You can see that there. And then you can also see that some districts give different amounts in the district contribution to benefits. Some districts are at a range. They give a different level of district contribution for the different types of health plans that are available. And you can see that, that many just give that flat same amount. And when we are looking at overall compensation, that is something we want to look at, is that overall amount, including the health insurance.
This next slide is just a line graph of the data that you saw on the previous slide. So, you can see where your current, the orange line going up is the actual average, and so they're actually kind of hovering above the market average, but your new hires are a little bit on the low side, starting at year 10. You all have always had a philosophy of paying your current teachers a little bit more than your new teachers, and that's been going on for a long, long time, which is fine. But I'd like to, we're going to, I'd like to see, maybe you bring in your new hires a little bit more competitively. The next slide is a pie chart of your newly hired teachers, because I want to see what level of experience are you hiring. Right now, this is, you have got 37% of your teachers are, had zero years, or brand-new baby teachers. And then you can see the other percentages. From one to five years is 36%, from six to 10 years is 13%, 11 to 15 years is 8%, and then 6% with more than 16 years of experience. And that low percentage for the over 16 years is pretty typical. Once teachers have 16 years, they're embedded in their communities, they, kids go to the same schools, and so they're not as likely to jump from one school district to the other, not as mobile as teachers that, a little bit earlier in their careers. The ones that you are hiring with more than 16 years tend to be people with specialties. They might be bilingual, or band, or orchestra, or coaches, or someone like that, that you really are wanting to entice to the school district.
So, could I, could I interject real quick on this? This is ties to your previous slide as well. Beth, probably, I think what would be instructive for me is, if we're going to discuss increasing new, new salaries for new teachers with experience, I'd like to know how many, for example, 10- or 15-year teachers are we losing versus bringing in? Because to me, it makes more sense that you pay your experienced teachers more because you want them to stay. You want that longevity. And so, if, if this number is lower, because we're not, I don't know if this even, this math even works anywhere besides in my head. But if it's lower because we're not bringing as many in, and we're keeping, you know, we're bringing in 100 a year, but we're keeping 1,000 a year, to me, that makes sense.
Absolutely. We'll do some research.
Okay.
On that.
This chart illustrates what your current staff, the maturity of your current staff. Right now, we plot the number of teachers in each year of credible years of experience. The median is at 10 years. That's about the state average. The state average is around 11 years right now, so it's pretty close. This means that half of your teachers have 10 years or less, and other half of your teachers have 10 years or more of experience. I like to show you this because, first off, I have a little arrow that says the 25 years. You've got 8% of your teachers have more than 25 years of experience. So, that's important to know because they will eventually be cycling out of the system. They'll be retiring, and you're replacing them. You can see the experience level that you're replacing them with newly hired employees. So, if you want to make improvements in your teacher salary schedule, it's going to, there's going to be some cost associated with that because of the number of teachers in those years of experience.
These numbers are for Plano?
These are Plano.
Okay. The 25-plus, the 8%, how does that rank compared to other districts, or districts we're comparing ourselves to?
The median is, is about one year lower for, I would say that's probably about, I mean, I don't have the numbers right here in front of me, but I'm comfortable saying that it's pretty fairly typical of a big, of a large urban district like that. I can, I can look around. It's not something I really track, but, but it's just knowing, knowing that, well, 8% of your teachers, that's quite a few because of the number of teachers that you have. So, you'll be replacing them with newly hired teachers, and so, just improving some of the practice of bringing in newly hired teachers, I think, will, will help you.
Yeah, I think to your point, to follow up on that, I'd like to know if this is sort of our running average, typical year-over-year, or if this is an anomaly where it's a higher number of people. If it's a year-over-year, and we're always around 8% that many teachers then, and have been for a number of years, then I think we probably already manage it through process. But if this is what you're saying, if this is a big number, and, you know, the risk is that we're going to have all 8% leave on the same year, I mean, that's, that's a prop?
That's probably not going to happen, but...
Agree. But I'm a worst-case-scenario-type person, so...
I have one more question for you.
Well, that's something, I'll answer your question. I do have the past few years, I mean, we've been working with you for many years, and so I can go back the past few years and see what those numbers have, have looked like in the past.
So, one more question to you. When we count the five years, 10 years, I asked that last year, I don't remember the answer. Is that all in-district experience, or including...
Total credible years of experience.
I'm sorry?
Total years of experience, for this, for this is not in-district experience. It's their total credible years of experience. So, if they have outside experience in another school district, that's included in these numbers.
Okay. I got you.
So, I've run two budget impact models for you, both with $53,000 starting salaries. I, that, you know, I, my crystal ball broke a long time ago, and I'm not really hearing what, it's kind of early yet, so I don't know what anyone else is doing right now. But I am running 2% and 3%, general pay increases for most of the districts I'm working with this year. This would be an $1,125 or $1,685. The total cost for all the employees, the 2% is about $7 million, and the 3% is about $10.5 million. I can run other scenarios for you, but that would be at your direction. It's going to be based on, you know, your available revenue, and it's still, still a little early, but you can just communicate through Beth and June, and I can run additional scenarios for you.
Okay, so I wanted to wrap up with what our next steps are on the administration side. We are looking at investigating, costing out, if you will, some potential adjustments, and one of them is the higher-end salary for your experienced teachers, your five-years, your 10-years, your 15-years, the area on that line graph that really dips. And what would it look like, cost it out, if we didn't dip as much? Another potential adjustment we're looking at is the compensation for bus drivers. You can barely go a day without seeing in the news or an advertisement somewhere of needing bus drivers. We do need to remain competitive. And so, we're, we're costing out what some various options would be there, and keeping close track of what our neighbors are planning to do. And then we have small groups of employees that just need to be adjusted. Some of the information we receive from TASB on an annual basis is where our salaries fall. And the marketed adjustment, or the market consideration for some of our jobs is not just school districts. And a great example is our deaf education interpreters. Our comparisons that we look at for that group include not only school employees, but those that work out in the private sector as interpreters. And one of our groups of deaf education interpreters, as an example, is quite a bit below market, and we need to make, looking at an adjustment there. As you saw in the, the schedule or timeline that was sent to you as part of a board update, a couple of weeks ago, we are looking to bring a compensation package approval to the board in May, prior to a budget approval in June. And that compensation package consideration will include any of these adjustments that we feel we need to make, as well as recommendation for possible compensation raise for all employees.
Hey, Beth, one last thing, and on the new hire experienced teacher salary increase, if, when you look at that stuff for us, if you could also look at, kind of, what is the average tenure of the teachers that we are losing? If we're losing the 10 to 15s, let's understand why, part of that salary, then certainly that's something to consider. If we're losing the 1 to 5, because they're moving away, they're going to a different career, they're determined teaching, then a raise at the 10 to 15 level isn't going to, there's no correlation there. So, to raise, I mean, outside of just being competitive, I'd want to understand why we're going to make that a focus.
Absolutely, and we're going to investigate that. Just to clarify, what we're looking at in that area is not for the teachers that are currently with Plano ISD.
Correct.
But the ones we are trying to attract and hire in. But absolutely, we'll, we'll effort out that data for you.
I mean, look, if we're having trouble recruiting those people, then absolutely, that's, that needs to be part of the answer as well. So, I just need to understand the why.
Yeah. And, and as we, we all know, money is not the complete solution to recruiting and retaining employees. It's part of the package, but Plano has a lot to offer, whether it be our professional learning, or the variety of programs that we offer for teachers to work in, and for their students, their own personal students, to enjoy. We're, we're a great place to work. We, we just need to make a tweak here and there.
So, you actually led to exactly the statement I was going to make. The difference between the 25th percentile and the 75th percentile is $1,500 at year one, and on average, it's just under $2,500. So, it's not the salary. It's, and I'm, I'm not suggesting we don't give an increase, or we give less than anybody else. I think we want to be where we're, where we are, but it has to be other things. The convenience, you know, if you live in, like, for example, I don't know anybody who would live in Plano and go to Rockwell to work, for example. The convenience of, of working closer. The, I, I know one of the teachers that we lost last year to Frisco because she lives in Little El. And it was, and it was funny because she was, she just won the Tech Titans Award, and then we find that she moved to Frisco. So, it's that. It's the culture. It's things like that that we need to make sure, because that would be the number-one reason why somebody would come here versus somewhere else. The second, the second is a question, you know, healthcare, you're right, healthcare is a big issue. In the last tax reform that was passed, there are a few things that affected healthcare. Is there anything there that we can use to offer more than we can today?
Well, on the healthcare side, right now, we are, trapped is not the politically correct word, but it's the one that comes to mind, in TRS Active Care. As a member of TRS Active Care, that is where we are. So, we do not have options outside of that system. They set their rates, really, at the end of June on an annual basis, and really, it's too early now to even be hearing grumblings. We start to hear leaks of information late May, early June. The changes to the Affordable Care Act that, that actually were part of the tax reform, we do not believe are going to have enough of a positive impact on the health insurance system that we have. A lot of the things that were repealed were not related to the benefits that must be offered in those healthcare systems. And that is one of the reasons that healthcare benefits became so much more costly a few years ago. So, we do not anticipate that we're going to see any benefit from that for our employees just yet. I, I will tell you that I am fully expecting that premiums will increase and benefits will decrease. That's what we've seen over the last few years. I can't tell you specifically, but that's what we are anticipating.
Thank you for your optimism.
I can be optimistic in a lot of places, but I need to be honest here.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions for me? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's been a pleasure.
Thank you, Ann.
All right. The next item on our information-only work session is related to the budget report. And our Assistant Superintendent for Business Services, Randy McDowell, will introduce the budget report. Mr. McDowell.
Yes, thank you, President Evander, members of the board. Beth and I are actually going to tag-team this one, so I'm going to start out with some staffing historical information. I'll turn it over to her. She's going to talk about some staffing ratios, federal and state funds, and then she's going to hand it back over to me to talk about projected revenues, and talk about fund balance. And so, okay, so as we go into staffing, we brought you this slide in a previous presentation, and you asked for more information. And so, over that five-year period from 1314 until the current year of 1718, this is all Fall PEEMS submitted data. And as you can see here, the number of teacher FTEs increased about 75, and the total staffing FTEs, which would also include teachers, with everything else included as well, increased right at 300. And so, we went back into that, and Linda Madden went back in and pulled the PEEMS data by category, and so, so we're using that. The numbers are slightly different, but pretty much the same. For example, teachers on here are 3,900, and on the other, it was 3,899. So, we're, we're within a couple on rounding here. So, you see the same number, basically, on teacher increase of 75. I'll just hit the high points. If I missed something you want to discuss, please let me know. Educational aids went up 70 in that same timeframe. And let me stop here and back up and make a point. Back in 2011, when we had the significant budget cuts, our records showed that we cut 444 positions. And I don't have a breakdown of those, I think it would take us some time to go back. But just so you know, part of this, I would assume, coming in late to the game, is a rebuilding of some of the staff that was cut back in 2011. So, so just so you have that perspective. Then as we go on down, we see some pretty minor changes, and many of these are going to be in the special ed area. We see speech therapists, speech-language pathologists increased by seven. Teacher facilitators, these are primarily behavioral specialists, elementary curriculum specialists, and secondary curriculum specialist is the majority of that 10 increase there. Athletic trainers, we only had one on each high school, and one on each senior high, and one shared. It's the other high schools. In an evaluation back in 2016, it was recognized that all of our peer districts around us did have a full-time trainer at all high schools and at senior highs. And so, so that was increased. That was doubled during that year from six to 12. Other campuses, this is a category that went away, and so you see it had four back in 2014. In 2017, we had nine, but then it went away, and those were reclassified into other areas. The majority of those were, we, we had some nurse, nurses that were on special assignment. We also had a behavioral specialist in that category, a parent trainer, a deaf ed trainer, and some other specialists that were included. Like I said, those came down to another category, and so, I would say there's been no change in that area. Teacher supervisors, that was one back in 2014. That is 14 this, this current year. Six of those are Title I coaches at middle school. Eight of those are social, emotional teacher leaders. The majority of those were put in place last year, and then a couple more were added this current year. Okay, as we, as we go on to the next page, assistant principals were increased by 17, and that was primarily, at almost all campuses now, we have a full-time assistant principal. Going on down, counselors, there was an initiative to increase those. The majority of those increases were back in 2014 and 15, but over that time period, we increased by 18. Educational diagnosticians, again, a special ed item. There were four diagnosticians that were added. There were three LSSPs, or psychologists, that were added, two social workers. There were three LSSPs, or psychologists that were added, two social workers. Superintendent and deputy, superintendent deputy and assistant superintendents, that was increased from six to seven back in 2015, when the technology, which is DAN, became an assistant superintendent position. The HR became an assistant superintendent position back in 20, last year, 2017, and the deputy superintendent was added in the current year, actually late last year, but it wasn't in the fall, so it didn't pick it up in last year's PEEMS. Just so you know how that went from six to nine, those are the three that were elevated to make that number. Non-campus professionals has increased by 16. Part of this is a recoding of the one that I talked about earlier, other, under other campus. Some of the other additions, there's been two professional positions added in communications, one accountant in the finance office, one security officer, two staff in the professional learning department, and a pre-K coordinator, the ones that we found. You have to kind of dig for these because you're comparing back to five-year-old PEEMS data, but Linda and her staff worked, worked hard to dig that up. The auxiliary staff increased by 62, and that's a big category. That's going to be your bus drivers, your bus monitors, clerical staff, maintenance staff. That's really the catch-all. Everything else that didn't fall in a category above that. And so the, the total of all that is roughly the 300 add, and you, you can see where the 75 teachers were. So I hope that gives you a better breakdown of where those staff came in, and it probably does lay a foundation as we move into staffing discussions over the next few months.
Randy, in that category of auxiliary staff, I recognize we need bus drivers and bus monitors.
And I'm sorry, I missed another, food service workers were in that number as well.
So do we give those just a very careful scrutiny, though, when we consider adding, adding one of those versus adding a social worker or a teacher? So Beth, is there some process where the person's grilled fairly extensively before the head count is awarded?
There absolutely is. We look at those, those needs very carefully. I can speak to the, the bus driver piece specifically. We look at how many routes we need to run, and we have to have enough bus drivers to run those routes, and the monitors or bus assistants on your special education route. So that is real, that one specifically is driven by an increase in routes that's needed, driven by the needs of our students, and where they're living, and, and shifts and new neighborhoods and, and that kind of piece. We, we are at a point that we're carefully scrutinizing any add. And in many places, we're scrutinizing very carefully replacements. So, so yes, we are paying, paying very close attention.
We think as a district that's not really adding children unless they're really moving to fairly different places, or we have the issues with special education and having special needs, I wouldn't anticipate that we would have growth in our bus routes, do we?
We do have some. I'll give you one example. We, we have a route that includes a, a large apartment complex that now has grown so much, we can't fit all the kids on one bus. So we add a-
So more kids actually coming from an apartment complex? Wow, that happens, huh?
The route that includes, yes. So, excuse me, that adds routes. Our special education student needs add routes. But you're right, we don't add 25, 30 routes a year. It, it is something that they're looking at, and Carrie is looking at with transportation very carefully on an annual basis, but, but looking at those shifting needs. Thank you.
So I would, I would expect, you know, this goes back to 2014, but that's right when we were coming out of the doldrums of the 2011 cuts. I'd really like to know, and if anybody remembers when we, when y'all did the 2011 cuts, since I wasn't on the board, how many of those were teachers versus staff? Because you, if you just look at the numbers, you're looking, you go, wow, you guys added 299 staff versus 177 classroom instructors. That's a lot, but I'm thinking that what we were doing was building back up to where we were in 2011, and the majority of the cuts were in those positions versus, I mean, I was at the meeting where y'all did the cuts, and I recall the conversation being, we want to do as, as few teachers as possible.
I don't have the number, but I, I do remember like the principals being added back. A number of the schools, we removed the assistant principal.
Right.
And it worried me when we put them all back, not because we did an analysis of the need, but because it was the fair thing to do. And so you may have a school where the need is not as great, you didn't need a full-time assistant principal, but out of our old-fashioned equality versus equity, we might have added back. And that's why I'm really hoping as you do this next analysis that we give careful scrutiny. And just because everyone has an assistant principal, that's not a good enough reason anymore.
I remember we reduced librarian aides. I don't know that we've added them back. Have we added them back? I didn't think so. We cut programs and the staff, and the positions associated with the programs. So I don't know if these exact additions are related to the reincorporation of the same program or redeployment and growth of other programs.
We also cut stipends. For example, gifted and talented no longer reduce stipend. I think that's still correct.
And Beth, I was looking over the numbers for the other professionals, you know? And the thing is, it's a good thing that you increased the speech therapists, but the physical therapists are remaining the same three numbers. You know, currently, it only shows that from 2014 and 2018, we still have only three physical therapists. And then, I'm not sure about the need, but for knowing about special education, the music therapists are the same numbers, they're not increasing. The occupational therapist has been the same since 2015. And I, I have a feeling, don't we have more need?
I will say that it is, it is not uncommon to, to need to increase our speech language pathologists or SLPs. That is a very common need with our, especially heavily at our, our youngest learners. That would be very expected, that that would be much higher than the others that are not as commonly used related services. I can tell you that the special education department assesses very carefully the needs of our students and brings forward those requested adds based on those needs.
A thought just occurred to me, as I was thinking about, you know, the reduction of programs and what we've added. When we added the full-day pre-K and, you know, at, at all of these schools, those are probably new bus routes for those kids. They ride on the same bus route? Okay.
They just would get on the existing routes that were available.
Okay.
A couple, go ahead.
But there would also be new teachers hired for those locations. So from a programming point of view, I think some of this count here went maybe in that direction, rather than really replacing the same exact program that we had before. I could be wrong, but that's just occurring to me at this moment. Carrie?
I was just going to go back, I'm sorry for not jumping in long ago. A couple of things that are examples of routes that, that we don't start the year with, y'all are probably familiar with the McKinney-Bento opportunity for kids and, that are homeless, and even if they move out of the district for, in a shelter, relatives. I was talking to Transportation as recent as this morning, and they were sharing, we have a family that is in South Oak Cliff, and there's one at each level. And we, we are responsible for providing, continuing to provide transportation to get them to their home campuses, which is here in Plano, at, once again, three different campuses. So you can kind of see that. And then the, y'all probably recall, we had some conversation about this time last year with a group of our bilingual students that were refusing programs at one of their program sites. So, and it was a pretty condensed, our population area, so we provided some buses, some specific routes at those three campuses individually that were not, were not regular routes. So those things kind of come up on a, even throughout the year, some special needs situations. If we have somebody that moves into the district and has specific needs, then, then those are going to occur. So there's, and those are just the routes themselves. We obviously have some other things as well that go on from a, from a transportation needs, where we need drivers that are available because as others are not available driving buses, we can have people that can get, can get, get the routes taken care of.
Carrie, what kind of vehicle do we use to go down to South Oak Cliff for those children?
Buses. And there's, there's a variety of things that can occur. In this, it's a little unique because Dallas County Schools, which you're familiar with their situation, but with, regardless of wherever the, the families might temporarily be, Transportation works with that district and, and see if we can, we'll, we'll do the morning route, can they come to the afternoon route? Can we potentially meet somewhere if it's a significant distance? So there's, there's some conversation that goes on as well to try to be as efficient as possible. But at the end of the day, it's still, there's an obligation there to take care of that. And those are things that are kind of, you know, off, off the radar that people aren't real familiar with as far as just driving the routes around the neighborhoods and things like that.
Thank you.
I did just receive one more piece of information I'd like to pass on. So under educational aides, where we added 70 over that time period, 32 of those were pre-K aides that were added the last two years for the pre-K program. Just wanted you to know that.
How many of them?
32 of the 70 are pre-K aides, added the last two years. Okay, and if there's no other questions on that, I will turn it over to Beth.
All right, so I'm going to talk a little bit about staffing. Want, want to kind of lay a foundation on some things that Randy and I have been working on pretty closely together, but also how our staffing needs to work as a, as a foundation. We, we had a long conversation yesterday as cabinet around changes in needs and, and offerings and programs and staffing requests, and we're continuing to get through those requests and, and look at those, those ads and needs, whether it's for additional teacher or counselor or special education staff or social workers. So we're still looking at those specifics, and, and I invited any board member who wishes to sit down and look at one-on-one, look at very specific staffing calculations, ratios, formulas, in, prior to our next meeting when we bring forth the actual ads, to do that. I, I am more than happy to do that, and I, I actually look forward to those conversations when we can talk very specifically about different types of positions, how they're being funded, and how they're being allocated. So tonight is really, really just kind of that foundational layer. We look at, we have different funding sources for staff allocations that have each of their own, different guidelines and requirements in how they're used. Our most unregulated use of funds is, of course, our local funds. We can determine how, how those funds will be used. We also receive state funds, and this is more of a regulated use of funds, if you will, in that the funds we receive for compensatory education or special education or career in tech, bilingual ELSL or GT, we have to spend for those programs. And then, of course, we have our federal funds that you're familiar with, whether it's IDEA for special education or Titles 1, 2, 3, and 4. All of those come together in different measures to put together our, our staffing allocation plan, as well as how much staff we can afford. So I want to talk first about compensatory education funding. That's one we've been paying quite a bit of attention to as of late. Compensatory education funding is intended to provide resources, including personnel resources, for students that are considered at risk. And there are 13 criteria that contribute to a student being classified as at risk, and I believe that was provided to you. These are students that are considered at risk for not completing high school, and there's a, a number of factors there. When you read through that handout of those 13 criteria, you will notice that economic disadvantage is not an at-risk criteria according to the TEA definition of an at-risk student. However, it does come into play here. So for campuses that have greater than 40% of economically disadvantaged students, those compensatory education-funded resources can be used to serve all students on that campus. If they are less than 40% economically disadvantaged as a campus, then those resources, including personnel, may only be used to serve those students that meet one of those 13 criteria as at risk. Title I, one of our federal programs, and actually the, the one I want to talk about this evening, has a program intent to provide more resources for the campus with the highest concentration of economically disadvantaged students. That's the way the federal program works. We are making adjustments in campus allotments for the 1819 school year based on the resources that are available to us, that are coming to us from the federal government for our title program. It is important to note that Title I, as, as well as compensatory ed to some extent, really must be used for supplemental programs and not to supplant the, the district-based program. Meaning, I can't take the same position, the same person, position on one campus and pay for it out of local funds, and another campus pay it out of title funds. That would be considered using those federal programs to supplant what the district is saying it needs to provide.
Beth, just to ask a question for a moment.
Yes.
I know we have the Plano Family Literacy Program. It's $400,000 plus that we spent for years. Are we required to do those sort of expenditures because we receive Title I money?
Part of the Title I program that is part of the requirement from the federal government is a parent involvement component. It is a certain percentage that must be spent on parent involvement activities. I could not answer tonight, but would certainly find the information on what specifically that amount is based on our Title I allotment from the federal government as compared to our family literacy program.
I'd be curious to know that, and it's not because I don't like literacy, but I want to make sure we are equitable. And historically, we've had a concentration of services on one side of the district that we don't have in other parts. And I just want to make sure we're looking at everything with great scrutiny.
Absolutely. I'll get that information-
Thank you.
-together for you.
Beth, the, the allowance in Title I is 5% can be spent on parental involvement.
Can or must?
Can.
So it doesn't have to be?
Right.
All right, so look, let's look at what does this really mean? What does this comp ed and title piece really mean? It means that we have to use these funds in accordance with the guidelines that are provided either by the state for comp ed or the federal government for our title programs. They have to be supplemental in nature, not supplant our district allocations. We have to be able to show that they're supplemental, and that means that we need to have a campus staff allocation plan that is formula-driven. And I'm going to talk more about formulas in a minute, but when you have a formula-driven methodology for providing staffing allocations and staffing resources to campuses, then you are able to show what is above that base plan, whether it's resources provided out of compensatory ed or resources provided out of Title I. So you'll hear me talk tonight, as well in the future, about what is the base plan? And that's what I'm talking about. What is our defined base plan?
Hey Beth, this is not a question for tonight, but for these compensatory education funds from the state, I'd be interested to know kind of what is, how does it work into the formula, the amounts? Is this some, when was the last time it was addressed at the legislative level? Because this may be an area for our legislative agenda to say, look, this is something that hasn't been addressed in-
"Look, this is something that hasn't been addressed in 20 years and needs to be addressed to see if there needs to be an increase."
It would be similar as the other weightings in the finance formula. And there's all kinds of weightings, whether it be for CTE or GT services. And Randy, do you know off the top of your head the last time they were adjusted?
Long time ago. I believe there were discussions on that yesterday in the hearing.
One of the things that came up in the hearing yesterday was that one of the school districts, I think it was a smaller school district, that was talking about compensatory ed dollars and asking that the parameters, the requirements around their use be lifted so that there was more discretion at the local level about how they could be used. Because he said sometimes they're too much in one area and not enough in another area. So they were asking for some, not really a weighting, but latitude.
And we see that on some of our campuses. It's easier to spend on a school-wide campus. It's over 40%, of course. But when you get on a smaller campus, let's say it has 50 at-risk students, you can't really afford to put a full FTE there, a full instructional coach or something like that, interventionist. And so it does become a challenge because it's not broad enough on some campuses that have low numbers. There is another provision in this that a district can set a local criteria that you can have an additional 10% of students that meet a local criteria. And so in Plano, we have 13,000, it's right at 13,000 this year of students that are at-risk out of 54,000. So we could add a local criteria that's board-established or board-approved to add another 1,300 students that we could serve under state comp ed. And so we do have staff that's been working with area districts to see how they define that. Dyslexia is another one that a dyslexia student doesn't qualify. It is one of the 13 at-risk indicators. And so we were pulling data yesterday and I believe about 60% of our dyslexia qualified under another criteria. And so we're really just trying to figure out right now, before we bring a recommendation to y'all, what criteria would make the most sense to try to capture another 10% of the students?
What number of our low SES kids don't qualify as at-risk? Would that be a category that we could add? Because it just amazes me that low SES is not an at-risk factor.
I would think that would be way too big of a number.
Well, if you're already covering 13,000, I'm just wondering how does that 13,000 intersect with the 15,000 that we know are low SES? We think it's a fairly high overlap, but it may not cover all.
I would think it'd be a fairly high overlap. But I think if you open it up to all free and reduced, I think that would be quite a few more than 1,300.
Well, I'm just thinking of the ones that are unserved right now under that definition. It might not be tremendously more. Also, I will say on campuses, as they get close to the 40%, you start to have all the struggles of a low SES campus and to basically deny service to the other children who are sitting next to them who are also impacted by that scenario is just cruel. And I've seen that happen. I know that's not our decision, that's a state decision. But to say, "We're going to provide an extra resource to help you with your reading, even though providing service to you is taking time away from this other child and they can't participate." There was some program called iRead. I mean, there's some programming like that that's really helpful. But we would say, "Oh, no child, you can't use that." It's very cruel. Seen it happen.
I would absolutely agree that this is all difficult, absolutely. And one of the things that we're working very hard on is how to operate creatively within the box. Creatively within the box.
That's good, because when I read all this last night, I was very depressed thinking, "Are they just going to give me all the rules about how we can't and won't help children? Let's think about how we can help children." So I'm glad you're thinking that way.
And so what is the 10% we can define, you say locally defined?
Yes.
I guess I don't quite understand.
So would be additional students and additional, in our case, 1,300 students that we want to serve that don't meet one of these 13 criteria.
Oh, okay. But we're providing services for them?
That would, if we set a local criteria to qualify another 13, up to 1,300 students, we could then serve them out of comp ed on a non-school-wide campus.
So it might be item number 14 on this list?
It would be an item 14. It would be as defined by you, the board.
And theoretically, we would additionally receive dollars for that.
No, unfortunately, this is the odd thing about state compensatory. It's generated on the prior year's best six-month average of free and reduced students.
Based on free and reduced?
It's based on best six months, free and reduced. But you can't spend it on free and reduced, unless they're at-risk, but you can always spend it on at-risk.
I forgot we were talking about the funding formula. I tried to apply logic to it. So my bad.
You did ask a question, though, about when did the legislature look at these formulas? Again, I will say during the last legislative session, the formula that was subject of more than one bill was the bilingual ESL allotment. So, and changing the weighting of that. So there has been some discussion within the system of the weighting. There's certainly potential for a whole lot more discussion. Was there any outcome on dyslexia? I know that was also discussed in 85th session. Did they out-of wait for that or no? It seemed like there was something.
There was discussion on that, but there was nothing that was.
Nothing came out of it?
That I'm aware of. Nothing in the funding formulas was avert.
But charter schools got facilities funding?
Facilities. So what have I been doing this year? And I'm going to say that I have been concentrating a lot of my time on building the formulas and looking at what formulas were already in place as well as building new formulas. I've been doing a deep analysis of current staffing allocations and patterns of how resources are allocated. I have emphasized, though, how personnel resources have been allocated, not materials resources, of course. That deep dive and deep analysis has involved a lot of collaboration with various departments, whether it be academic services or campus services, looking at how things have, how decisions have been made, what formulas are in use, but also talking quite a bit to campus leaders, meeting one-on-one with campus leaders to truly gain an understanding from their perspective of the needs they have on their campus as well as the exact roles that various staff members play. Because just because we call a particular position "coach" on this campus and on this campus, on this campus, they may be doing slightly different jobs. So trying to wrap my arms and brain around what's actually happening out there. Taking into account a variety of factors, whether it be student demographics, our English language learners, our special education students, mobility of students, which must come into play, economic disadvantage, looking at building formulas that use percentages versus formulas that use numbers. And I'll tell you right now, the best models that I'm drawing have a combination. I can't say that every resource is allocated in exactly the same way, nor it should be. So I'm going to use a couple of examples. I'm going to talk about Title I for a moment. We are required in Title I to determine the resource allocation of those federal funds to rank order our campuses by percentage of economically disadvantaged. We then differentiate the amount per student that that campus will receive based on the percentage of economic disadvantage on that campus. We then take the amount and multiply it times the number of economically disadvantaged students. So that is a formula that looks at both percentage of students on a campus as well as actual numbers of the student on the campus. Because both those things are really important when we're looking at formulas. Another example is counselors at elementary schools. We have a base program of, every elementary school has a counselor. When you rise above 650 students on the campus, you have, you get another half of a counselor. If you are above 50% economically disadvantaged, you get another half of a counselor. If both those things happen together, those two combine to be a whole. So it's another example of a formula that involves both numbers of kiddos as well as a factor that is a percentage. And then other formulas are based solely on numbers. An example of that would be secondary ESL teachers. That is really driven by the number of ESL students on the campus. Another consideration or factor that's involved in staffing formula decisions and creation is unique program needs, either current needs or near-future needs. That can be needs of a particular area of the community where we're looking at a need for social workers. It can also be high school programming. We've had a lot of conversation in this room this year about dual credit. Well, when we're looking at bringing dual credit in-house, if you will, and having many of those classes taught by our staff, we realize that for a year or two, as we are making that transition, we may need to allocate a little bit more staff, 1, 2, 3 staff members at a senior high school so they can get into the system, the teachers who are qualified and eligible to teach that class. Those will sort out over time, but it is a consideration right now. And then that will be replaced by another future, near-future program. So elementary campuses, how are we defining, how are we working to define the PISD-based program? So we have to look beyond the allocations of classroom staff. I included that on the list. You're very familiar with that. Whether it's 22:1 or 26:1 or how that actually shakes out on a campus, but those allocations you're very accustomed to. And that involves both our bilingual and our monolingual classrooms. It goes beyond that, though, to look at our fine arts, our physical education, our PACE teachers, and then our leadership on the campus, whether it be counselors, assistant principals, front office staff. When you have a campus with a high mobility rate, you've got to have additional folks working in that front office because you have students enrolling and withdrawing every day. Whereas on.
Thank you, thank you.
Whereas on another campus that has a very low mobility rate, they can go two, three, four weeks without that kind of movement. And we need to acknowledge that in how we allocate staff. And then we have to look at our instructional support. And our instructional support comes in a variety of ways. Instructional specialists, bilingual support, ESL specialists, instructional support. Right now, we have several different role names for people that are doing very similar jobs. So there is an element to this that is simplifying and making sure that people are being paid out of the right fund. You ask an educator, they have no idea what fund they're paid out of. And I don't want them to know. They don't need to know. But we need to know that they're paid out of the correct fund so that we can continue funding out of that code. And then we look at other support. Not necessarily your in-classroom, specifically your reading, math, et cetera, support, but those services and supports that we know that really play a role in a student's ability to learn and learn well. And that's your SEL teachers, your parent liaisons, and your social workers. Those pieces are really important, but need to become part of how we define a PISD-based program. Just because we define it as a program doesn't mean that program looks the same on every campus, but we have a logic and a methodology for how those resources are allocated. And then, of course, in another totally different conversation, for another day, another time, is special education teachers and assistants. And that really has to be driven by the needs of the students on that campus. That looks very different. What does it look like at secondary? At secondary, we look at a differentiated daily teacher load. So our campuses with higher numbers of economically disadvantaged students, we try and keep the difference, the daily teacher load lower than on our other campuses. We also have our ESL teachers, which I mentioned were really driven by the number of ESL students. That is an allocation that's part of a base program. We have to look at fine arts and other electives staffing and what's being supported to the campuses. And then finally, as a reminder, as part of the TRE that was passed a time ago, we have what we affectionately call our TRE positions. And the commitment was made at that time that our ninth through 12th grade campuses, so our high schools and senior highs, would each be allocated above their teacher load ratio to positions to serve in core subjects, to reduce the daily teacher load in a core subject. And those are brought, just brought forward every year. So we calculate what their desired teacher load is. That tells us how many teachers they need on that campus. And then we add the two as a part of that commitment from the TRE.
Beth, before you continue, as you're building the base model, you're building in certain required expectations. You know, this, these kinds of positions for these kinds of reasons. Will those base model requirements transfer to the campus so that the campus has, sort of like our fund balance, unassigned and assigned positions? In other words, will there be, I believe that in the past, there really haven't been assigned or encumbered positions. They've all been sort of locally determined at the campus. Is that changing, given the base model that's very important that we follow?
So there's a mix, actually. When a campus has allotted ESL teachers based on the number of ESL students on that campus, the expectation is those teachers are to be used for the ESL programs and the ESL students. When, and this next element will be a change. When a campus receives resources funded out of compensatory ed funds, it's going to come with guidelines on how that person may be used depending on the campus and the level of economic disadvantage on the campus. We have a number of specific type positions that are senior highs that are set asides and must be used in this fashion. And we are looking at and talking very seriously about how that looks in some of the other programs as well.
So take the example of the counselor that you gave a minute ago. The half and the half, it makes a whole. So does that whole transfer to say, "Okay, you need to have one whole person doing this job"?
So if it's an elementary campus that receives a half counselor out of size and a half counselor out of economic disadvantage, we put those two together and that's another full counselor. So that would then typically mean I have two counselors on the campus and they both serve the counseling function. It's not that the campus can say, "Instead of a counselor, I want another assistant principal." The allocation is for a counselor. It is specified for counselor.
I don't know if this is possible to accomplish or reasonable to ask for, but I sure would love to see a table of, you know, when you develop and share with us what the base model looks like and you say, "Okay, this is how, these are the numbers of FTEs and these are the roles that are assigned because of funding requirements." And I'd like to understand when that transfers to a campus, maybe in a color-coded fashion, these are available for discretion and these are not available for discretion?
Absolutely.
I would love to see that, Missy. And I think early in my tenure on the board, we actually got more specifics about how each campus and what their staff was, whether it was counselor, teacher, whatever. And then we stopped receiving that. I would love to see that because just like we think we want an integrated curriculum that's the same for 100 square miles, I've never understood why we gave so much discretion at the campus level where they could custom-craft their staffing. And so I would love to see that. And also that gives us a comparison so we can actually see how do social workers go across the board? And to give us information about the low SES and the ESL on these campuses so we can make sure. so we can make sure I can feel more comfortable and equitable.
And that is how we started the process this year, is we went back and looked at by campus, every single person serving any specific population and the number of economically disadvantaged kids, and then all the support staff, and, I mean, all the counselors, assistant principals, principals. And so we were looking at every single school and what they actually have. So that was the start before she started reworking formulas.
And that is so, so important because I think for the longest time, our principals have been either rewarded, or they think they're going to be rewarded if they turn away resources or don't ask for resources. And I think we need to get past that. And so when we can see an apple-to-apple comparison of some of these schools that are very similar and see why is the staffing support so different? I mean, you can tell from my questions, there's some trust building that needs to be done because I've been irritated about this for 15 years.
And I think that's part of the reason when we were having our conversations about how the timeline would go. I think the work sessions are great, but some one-on-one time to really sit down and pore over some specifics is probably just as important. If that's an area where you feel like you want to spend some time, we would like to spend that time so that everybody gets the same level, at least to some degree of understanding about where we've been and where we're trying to get to and how we're chipping away at that process. Because, you know, there's a lot of work to do on the front end of what do we want it to look like, but there's a lot of work to do on the back end of are we using the comp ed funds? Are they coded correctly? How are we using Title I funds? Are we doing it in the way that we're supposed to? So all that, kind of like I said before, is we're flying the airplane, we're fixing the airplane, we're building a new airplane, all at the same time.
You know, I have my appointment April 4th at 8:30.
I know.
So really to comment, if you don't mind, on something you said, that is why a formula-driven methodology is so very important. And you have to then stick to that formula. And you do have to take into consideration various areas of needs and where campuses are different, but that needs to be the exception rather than the rule. And those formulas need to be pretty transparent.
I really appreciate that you're looking not just at percentages, but also at absolute number of children in need because our old formula didn't do that. And you could have more kids that needed a campus, and just because it was a bigger campus, the percentage wasn't as high, and those kids didn't get resources. So I really applaud the intensity you're undertaking in this exercise. I'd also ask, have you talked to any of the parent leaders on these campuses to really get kind of the behind the scenes? What do they see? What needs do they see versus just from the administration?
I've really focused my efforts, honestly, on administration and current roles and what those people are actually doing. And as Ms. Bonzer said, there's an element of fixing, designing, and flying all at the same time, and we all need to recognize this will not be a one-year process. So fixing and designing where I can, knowing that next year there'll need to be another layer of conversations.
So having the formula, I know you're working very hard on that. Is there a need to also be considerate of what a principal sees on the ground after the formula has been delivered and the principal is trying to make it all work? Is there some appreciation or opportunity for a principal to say, yeah, but, and here's my, you know, pitch? So if that happens, in order to be fair, is it appropriate to say the following kinds of guiding principles we will use to consider the, yeah, but, you know, here's my ask? How do you see that happening? Or is that not going to be even an opportunity?
I think you have to build parameters around that. And in fact, I had a conversation with a principal today, an unnamed principal today, who was struggling with the, campuses have received the first, you know, base allocation, if you will, and struggling to figure out how that was going to work. It was a secondary campus. And we had a really good conversation about changing enrollment patterns and projections and what did that mean? And it really started off as a pitch for, I need more staff. And it really turned into, not at my driving, but just through the conversation was around, oh, well, I could do this, or I could do that. So I don't think the answer is always yes, the answer's always no. The answer is, can we talk more about it and figure it out? Yes, I think you have to be open to accommodations that might have to be made, knowing that you may be opening the door to create a supply issue. I am responsible for looking across the whole system, too. I expect that campus principals are advocating for their campus. Absolutely, that's their job. I also have a responsibility to the district and to you to make sure that we're staying within somewhat of a box. Creative box. Somewhat of a box. But making sure that principals have a voice, feel they're heard. But, you know, oftentimes, after a conversation, their answer isn't, well, I still need. It's, oh, I didn't think about doing this differently. And we have smart principals out there, smart, smart principals. And one of the advantages in Plano ISD that I've seen so quickly is our principals have a variety of experiences that they understand better than in some places, the variety of needs across the district. And they understand the need to balance. And I appreciate that. It makes my job a little bit easier.
So that's where I was actually, this whole conversation, I've been thinking about the word balance because, you know, to Tammy's point of people not asking for things that they think they need versus, you know, putting parameters and guidelines because the balance is, yes, you want some guidelines and parameters, but you don't want to chill the speech either. You don't want to kill the opportunity for people to ask. And so I would think if you are to develop guidelines and parameters, really, that has to come organically from the principals, would be my thought, is to allow the principals to kind of have input in terms of what that balance, how to strike the balance. But just from the answer you just gave, the entire time I'm listening to you give your answer, I'm thinking, holy cow, she has this thing nailed and completely understands what the problem is. I mean, you see the problem. And, you know, that's a heavy burden that you have, a heavy responsibility to make sure that balance is struck. So I think it's a real positive in terms of going forward that you see that already and that you're trying to build a creative box.
David, we had a meeting just last week on spring break. Six of us in the room with the TEA person that's working with us with Meadows. And I'll just give this as an example of what does their box need to look like? And maybe their box needs to look slightly different than other people's. And the input that we had was that we did listen to the principal about, tell us about who you have in your building and what you need and where you think you need support. What would that look like? How would it look different? And then we listened to the TEA consultant about her observations at the campus, about what is going on there that we could help with. And so we're in some pretty detailed conversations about, you know, equality versus equity versus how do you use the people that you have or reposition some things for more effective use? And a lot of that part comes from principal input. You know, so sometimes it's not about more, it's about utilizing things just differently. And so we're in some pretty deep conversations right there, right now, because that could be a model for future consideration as we're moving forward with our focus schools.
Well, that goes to Missy's point, too, of understanding where the staff is that's allocated to a specific line item versus where you have a little more flexibility and, you know, balancing between those two and making sure that you, those campuses that need flexibility have that flexibility.
So when you describe that counselor, that half of it was from the size of the campus and the other was from the economically disadvantaged, do you split the coding on that employee's salary?
We certainly can, and we do have employees across the organization that are split-funded. In that case, it's not necessary because counselors are paid out of local funds, so I don't need to attribute that salary to more than one type of fund. It's all in that first bin, if you will, of local funds.
Because I could see that would be a problem, year after year, you'd have to reanalyze everything.
Well, and I'm so glad you brought that up because that is something that is part of this. You have to reanalyze, to some extent, every single year. Number of ELL students changes, percentage of economically disadvantaged, numbers of economically disadvantaged change. How do we reallocate, change allocations based on those changing needs? Once you have good formulas in place, and please understand it's not a formula, it's many different formulas that come together into a large mega-formula, if you will, then it's not hard to do that. The flying of the plane becomes easier. To your point about the balance, we talk about what do you have that's tight coupling versus loose coupling, the tight-loose balance? What do you need to hold firm in anything you're talking about? But in staffing, one of the things you have to hold firm is that people that are paid out of state or federal resources have to be utilized in the right way. We also hold firm that students need access to all parts of the core curriculum, you know, so some basic things that we have to have. But loose, I'm probably not going to tell a high school principal how many math teachers they need to have versus English language arts teachers. That's something that's looser, as long as they're meeting the needs of their students. And it is a balance, but we just want to find the right balance.
I would say there's still strong suggestions that need to be made because the band booster parents would hit me up as a band booster, we need another band director. Why won't you, the board of us, have another band director? And I said, well, that's not our decision. We give the FTEs and then the principals decide where they go. And so I think there's still some areas that we have to give a little bit of watchful oversight there.
Absolutely, and we're continuing to have those conversations, yes, about what to hold tightly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and I'll talk about how we're going to pay for these positions. I've got the, a little bit tighter as far as a revenue projection on the general fund for the coming year, 2018, 2019. When we look at this, and I'll just hit some of the bigger categories, tax revenues based on an 8% property value increase would go up 45.6 million. I'll jump to the two slides later here real quick and just give you a number. Recapture is expected to go up, if we go up 8%, 53,130. And so our net revenues are actually down almost 8 million because our property value growth isn't currently projected to be as high as the 10.8 that it was last year. So then let me move on, and then I'll hit another point there. Interest income, because interest rates are higher, we're projecting that to, we're projecting we can increase that from 2.5 million up to 6 million. And so when we look at it, that's really the, when we net everything else out, that's really the additional revenue that we have for next year, is about a $3 million increase. We've got some other pretty small changes there. Per capita is up about almost 8 million next year, and that's because it's the second year of the biennium, and the per capita allotment is higher in the second year of the biennium. And so we're really, I mean, you can look at that as an offset for what we're losing on an 8% property value growth because recapture's greater than the revenue, but we're getting more per capita, so really all that netted out. It just happened to work that way for this year.
Hey, Randy, are there limitations on how we can use that investment earnings?
No, there's not at all. It's just the general revenue, so it's not restricted in any way. Foundation revenue is projected to go down just over 1 million. And again, that is because our wealth per WADA is going up, and so the little bit of state funding that we get is going down. Supplemental pre-K is going away. That grant expired, that was 75,000. Indirect cost is going down because we have less federal money to spend next year, and I'll talk more about that. Medicaid, as far as MAC, that is, we will not be applying for that next year. That's about 85,000. But SARS is going up about 450,000. And so everything else is pretty small there. But when we look at total revenues, we're up, like I say, just about 3 million, and that's the net of all of that. And so again, that's our bottom line increase, and really you can attribute that to interest income.
Any questions? So, you know, we talked earlier about a 2% or 3% raise, which is cost of living, basically, increase. So if we were to give, for example, a 3% raise, that's $10 million, which makes our net number down even further than what it is now, just to keep up with cost of living.
That's right.
That's frustrating.
So can you get higher interest on our investments?
We work really hard at that. We do have some parameters on what we can invest in.
Not condo buildings downtown Dallas.
Not bitcoins.
And you're right, David. So if you look at this, the current year budget, when you back out all the insurance and all that insurance stuff that's going on, it's approximately a $2 million positive budget. So if you take that 2 million, you add 3, and these are big picture numbers, but if you take that 2 million and add an additional 3 million to it, you've got a $5 million surplus. If you give a 2% raise, that costs about 6.5 to 7 million. And so you're 1.5 to 2 million in the hole before you've done anything, before you've added a position. And so that's really the numbers, is we were, I called it a budget retreat. These people called it something else by the end of the day, but as we worked through that yesterday, that was our starting point.
Yeah, I mean, just to put it a different way, to stand pat with what we have and give our employees a raise that would cover a cost of living increase year over year, we're talking about a $7 million hit to where we are. That's where we start from. We've got to come up with $7 million somewhere just to cover that.
That's right. And when we look at another year, we don't know what property values are going to do, but assuming they stay somewhat flat, we'll lose about almost 8 million in per capita, and so that deficit gets bigger if you look at a two-year. Of course, we've got a legislative session. I'll let y'all gauge how optimistic you are about that, but anyway, if we didn't get any additional funding, formula stayed the same, you can see how that deficit would grow the following year if property value stayed about the same, about 8% growth. Okay, any other questions on revenue? And we'll be coming back in April and bringing you the expenditure side of that and bring you some options and some updated bottom line numbers. We do have a federal funds impact for this coming year. So on IDEA, which is Special Ed Federal Funding, if you look back, you can see on the top line of that, our federal entitlement back in 13, 14 was about 7.8 million. At that time, we had about $3 million of roll forward, and so our carryover money that didn't go spent. So if you'll just look at that second line, the allotment has stayed somewhat similar. It climbed up to about 8.5 million, and then it's tapered back down to about 8.4 million, or that's what's projected again for next year. But look at the roll forward amount. That's gone from, we're rolling forward just over 3 million. That's gone from we're rolling forward just over 3 million to we think will end this current year with about 700,000. Oh, that's that's something that rolls into end this next year with about this year with about 212,000. So you can see we've depleted that down. And so to continue with the special ed staff that we currently have, if you didn't add any, you're going to have to shuffle some of those from federal funds back to local. And so we're looking at about a $427,000 cost to do that. And that's not adding any staff. That's just a shift shift in funding.
We need to run like have a clock going of what our deficit, how it continues to move up. So that's another 500 grand, basically, half a million dollars that we got to come up with just to stand pat.
Just to keep the same staff.
And part of that is because the, as Randy said, the federal funding has stayed the same, but the number of kids we're serving has increased in the last year. How many, Katrina? We approximately?
I think we started the year with 13 with 300 more than we ended last year.
Yeah.
And already we're up to 500 more as of this point in the year.
So the cost of the cost of doing business has increased in in the types of services. So with no more funding.
So what was that roll forward attributed to back when it was the 3 million?
Well, it's not uncommon to roll forward money. And so of course, I obviously I wasn't here, but it's just how you spend your state special ed versus your federal special ed. There's typically been a thought in schools that you need to carry over, roll forward some special ed funds, just in case you have a residential placement student. And so so many districts have tried to keep that number fairly high, just in case that situation comes up. As budget times get tougher, sometimes you do have to to eat into that and reduce that roll forward.
I think that's an area we need to address in our legislative agenda because I think that between special ed going up and on our, I mean, the roll forward disappearing and the number of students we serve going up, and then the recapture just eroding everything that we have. I wish more people understood that our property wealth, as it rises, is compared to a static number, and that's why our recapture goes up. If we could at least get them to index that number, we wouldn't be in such the world of hurt that we are in.
I think it's just amazing to look through and see that we have occupational therapists, we have physical therapists, we have to bus children from South Dallas, all based on laws that we don't determine. And I think many people are just unaware. Do you have to provide those services? Yes, we do.
The other federal fund that we have listed here is Title I. And you see, it's a very similar scenario. The roll forward on it was smaller at about 550,000 back in 13, 14. The allotment, again, increased up and peaked in 15, 16, and then it's declined back down to about 4.9 million. But you can see the roll for that 550 will be depleted down to just under 100,000 at the end of this year. And so we're going to have to look at at staffing. There is part of this whole equation of what we're doing to stay comp with title, with other funds about how how we staff the campuses. And so but but that is about a $531,000. It's going to take about 531,000 to recapture all of that.
So Randy, we talked so much about Title I. So the total amount we receive is $5 million? That's it? And so what about those other Title II, III, IV? I wasn't familiar with those. Are they significant dollars?
No, Title I's going to these are the largest two grants. IDEA is the largest. Title I is second. It drops off pretty fast. I don't have those numbers with me. But they're going to be Title III is very small, and and Title II is is much smaller than Title I.
So what this is telling me is if we're going to fix some of these issues at some of these schools, it's not going to be they Title I doing. It's going to be us doing it with our local funds and how we decide to allocate. There's no no cavalry coming.
Well, all the more reason that you've got to really scrutinize those formulas and get this tightened up so we can make certain that we're taking advantage of all of these grants to the best that we can and grab that other 10%. We need to do a local definition for our 14th criteria.
Your challenge, just because I couldn't help myself and added it up, is to now come up with 8.4 for $8 million just to stand pat.
Is that including the raise?
That's a that's a that's if we go with a 3% raise. If we go with a 2% raise, you can reduce that 8.5 number to about 5.
But that hasn't even we haven't even had the staffing conversation yet.
Correct. So yeah, that's just that's just standing pat.
So that segues nicely into the fund balance.
So let's talk about fund balance. And I believe it was my first or second meeting that fund balance came up. And I believe I brought you this slide at the last meeting where we looked at the history of fund balance. And you can see as fund balances increase obviously significantly, so is the budget. And so the percentage has gone from about 28% to about 30 about 36% at the end of this past year. And so you asked me, you know, what is a fund balance for Plano ISD? And so there's a couple of answers to that. First of all, you have a board policy in CE Local that defines what I would call a minimum amount of 20% of general operating expenditures excluding non-spendable fund balance. And so the the general fund operating expenditures in the current year is 657,250,000. And if you take that times 20%, that would be just on your board policy, that'd be 131 million minimum general operating fund balance. The second way to calculate it is the way that we normally talk, you know, three to four months has been the standard TEA guidance that we've heard through the years. So if you take three months, that basically just changes that 20% multiplier to a 25% multiplier. And so that would be about 164 million as far as a minimum. What I would say, though, is is to look more at, first, let me say, I think every school district is different on what their fund balance needs are. And so some of the things to look at is the fiscal year end. So Plano's on a June 30 fiscal year end. And so it takes more fund balance for a district on a June 30 fiscal year end just because of the cash flow of getting to when you start bringing in revenue. So this is all looking just from a cash flow perspective. The second thing is when the district, let me say, in general, when a district converts from an August 31 to a June 30 fiscal year end, typically, the fund balance goes up significantly. And so if we look back at the financials on Plano, whenever we did that, I'm sure we would see a significant fund balance increase. And that's just because of the accounting side of all of it and salaries and revenues and things like that. But it does take more fund balance reserve for a June 30 for a June 30 year end. Secondly, a chapter 41 district versus a chapter 42, a chapter 41 obviously gets a receives a lot less state aid, and we don't get the majority of our revenue until tax collections start coming in in December, January, February. And so when you look at that, we really have to cash flow a June 1 or July 1 fiscal year district for the months of July, August, September, October, November, and even partway into December, when when tax revenues start coming in. So typically, our low point as far as a cash flow is either going to be late November or it could even be mid-December. So you can see, it takes a lot of cash to cash flow this big of a budget for that many months. And then also, we're a Class 3 district, so the little bit of state aid that we get, we get a lot of that later. We get it in late fall and we get it in the next year. Some other things just to think about above cash flow or just capital improvement needs, what what else is on the horizon that you may need to use fund balance for? Obviously, any negative upcoming legislative impact. For example, in 2011, districts had to use a lot of fund balance to just keep from having to do a complete riff to balance the budget. And then other fund balance needs, the property value impact that we'll talk about here in just a minute. But we talked about it a little bit earlier, when we go from a 10.8 to an 8% growth rate, that has a negative revenue impact for that year. And then also just other things outside the normal budget, for example, insurance deductibles, and that list could go on and on. So in Plano, when we looked at this on cash flow, the expenditures from July 1 until the end of November are or and this is looking back at this current year, 185,450,000. So that was our outflows, our inflows. We had revenues that came in during that time period of 62,775. The majority of we got about we received about 17 million in state aid, and we did get some tax collections, people that paid early when they first got their tax statements, and that was about 41 million. And so that's where the 62 comes. But the negative cash flow over that five month period is 122 million. So you had to have at least 122 million in fund balances to keep from going to the bank and borrowing money to make a November payroll. So just give you an idea about how much fund balance you need just for that. Secondly, is I think that the board needs to consider or holding back $40 million of fund balance just for when we go from a 10% growth rate to a 0% growth rate because, and I think you've heard me say this before, if that happens in one year, our recapture is going to be about $40 million greater than our tax collections. And so it'll have a negative impact of about $40 million. But the same holds true if that happens over multiple years, that if we go from a 10.8 to an 8 to a 5 to a 3 to a 0, it would cost us about $40 million more in recapture than we bring in then. And so so I think at some point, the district will see 0% growth. And that's not a that's not even a worst case scenario of declining values. That's just a flattening of values. And so that would take about 40 million. So if you add those two numbers together, you're about 162 million in fund balance. And so when you ask me to look at it, that's what I would say is your minimum amount of fund balance that that Plano ought to consider. When we look at that retrospectively back to last year, if we would have known these numbers at year end, that would mean, well, let me go to the next slide.
Hey Randy, before you go to that slide, on the revenues that came in last year?
Yes.
That's $62 million. Is that a heavier number than in years past? The only reason I ask is because a lot of people pay taxes last year because federal income tax no longer allows you to deduct as much, starting in 18.
And Linda Madden and I talked about this, and I believe her thought was, yes, we did receive more taxes earlier. And if we wouldn't have, I think this would go, there would be less revenue.
Yeah.
This would go maybe into December, and that 122 could be even higher.
So that's what I was thinking is, do we need to give, I mean, really realistically think that that 122 is actually a bigger number because we're not going to get that same revenue bump this year?
I think in a typical year, that number could be bigger.
Okay.
Revenues could be less, causing your your negative cash flow to be higher.
Right.
I mean, so even let me let's just play that out. So if we're at 162 is the is the need, add 10 million of that, make it 172, I mean, a ballpark of what that revenue bump was in 17 versus 18, so that we can plan for that in terms of what we do with fund balance.
Sure.
I mean, it's 10 million, a good guess is that was just, you know, a wag ass.
It's about one more month, so it's basically 20% more.
I think and I think this next slide kind of, then it almost gives you the gap. And so, you know, the number I computed was 162. If you add 10 to that, of course, it'd be 172 million. How much we had in fund balance as of the end of the year, the total fund balance was 227 million. However, some of that was non-spendable, some was invested in inventory, and some was prepaid. Another amount of that was assigned for purchase orders that had been issued, but the goods hadn't been received. And so in the audit, the unassigned fund balance was really 214 million. And so now, if you take the 214, that's the audited number, and you compare it to 172, or if you go 160, it's about 52 million, that I would say is really your discretionary fund balance as far as how the board spends it. Because if you spend more than that, you really run into risk of having to go borrow money from the bank. If you add 10 million to that, of course, that drops it to 42 million. But there's no magical number. I just wanted to give you kind of a philosophy of how I think you can get to to a target as far as determining how much a fund balance really is really needs to be reserved or held versus how much is discretionary.
Well, so the 10 million is based on the 2% or the 3%?
No, no, no.
The 10 that we're adding to the?
That's based on the amount of money we received in 2017 for taxes that would normally be paid in at the end of January 2018. So 2017 taxes, people prepaid.
All right.
Because
So you're not talking about the raise?
No.
Okay, you're talking about we inordinately got 62,000, and we probably will never see that again prepaid.
Of that 62 million, 41 million was tax collections.
Right. And and so we don't know what the usual amount is? Yeah.
I mean, it's a guess, yeah.
It's a guess. But but the thing is, with the incentive that the 2018, you know, people were prepaying it because they could deduct it. That's not going to happen again. Okay.
And we can go back and look and see more what a historical number would have been for November and December.
I mean, that might be instructive just to kind of put a finite
Sure.
A finite guess on that amount.
Well, because, yeah, because what that ends up telling you is the 50-ish that you were saying remains discretionary. How many years will that last? Because we're looking at a $10 million deficit this year.
Correct.
So I'm saying that's four years.
So I mean, this kind of goes back to the the whole balance conversation. Because, you know, this has always been a burr under my saddle because we're not a for-profit corporation. We don't keep, we don't keep earnings. We're we are supposed to spend the tax dollars that we receive. That doesn't mean we need to go and spend 40 million bucks at once. Obviously, we need to be smart about what we do with this money. And if we're looking at, you know, with the uncertainty of a legislative session that's going to address school finance, we certainly need to be smart about that. But I also don't like having 40 to 50 million dollars more than what we think we need, or if it's even 30 or 20 million dollars. Let's put that into services and and get our fund balance back to where it's it's, I think, a better a better balance.
Well, it depends on your rate of growth and how long you're going to sustain the, say, 8% that we're sustaining right now. And when is it going to go down to a?
But he's accounted for that.
Yeah.
I I have a thought for planning purposes. So if we have 52-ish discretionary for, you know, oops, an amount of time, then we have to pay for our raises for some number of years with that. It is my personal expectation that we won't see any new money in the next session. I think we'll be lucky to keep what we have. I just don't think it's going to happen. So if that is the best case scenario, that we keep what we have, and say, if we give a certain percent raise in a projected fashion for a certain number of years in order to determine how long this will last us, what if we budget a certain amount to use on an annual basis for other discretion, like staff complement, you know, for other programming or whatever it is that you want to do with it, so that we know how long we have, how long our runway is, so that it's, you know, not an up and down thing every year. It's, well, this year, we're going to spend 10 million, and next year, we're going to spend 5, maybe like a cap that says, okay, kind of like we have a certain amount in, you know, that we're going to hold back. Maybe there's a certain amount that we're not going to exceed or something to help give us some parameters so that we know, all right, well, with this line of thinking, this will last us four years or five years or something like that.
I'd like to see that. I couldn't agree more that we don't need to be just, in essence, 40 this money. We need to be putting it to use for the children in our district. As much as I would love for it to be 40 million a year, probably reasonably, it may be a number more around 5 million. We think that could be a reasonable balance with what we have to do with pay raises, the number of runway years we're looking at. So I would hope that we would look at a minimum of $5 million. And David, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I agree. I think that, you know, I like the idea of getting a plan. I like the idea of getting an idea for a runway. What frightens me is that when we start paying for raises with this, eventually, that's going to run out.
Right, because they don't.
And and you look back at the federal dollars, the debt, the return, I mean, the reduction of the federal dollars, well, it looks to me like what was happening is that we were able to leverage that balance for a number of years, and it's gone. And now we're trying to come up with it another way. That's what we're doing here. We're going to leverage our fund balance for a period of time.
We're going to leverage our fund balance for a period of time.
But those salaries will continue.
Correct. And at some point, there is an end to that game. And so as we go through our runway, we as a group, a board, have to understand that, you know, recapture keeps going up, and our costs keep going up, and we're running out of money. And at some point, you got to pay the piper. So we know, when we talk about runway, we got to know that that's an end of that runway, that we're about, we got hit, and we either fly or crash.
So this is what's happening in another district. So yesterday, at the hearing, Spring Branch was testifying. So they are funding salaries, I mean, they've got like a big deficit budget, they're funding salary increases from their fund balance, and they're going to eat it all, all the way, they're borrowing money. So that's what it looks like. When we're out of runway, and when the ledge isn't putting any new money in, we're eating into that cash flow, and we're borrowing money. That's what it looks like.
Sounds like a banker conspiracy. Make these people borrow money.
But we're in a much better situation than most.
That's the second...
I'm sure you have a better perspective on that, Randy, than I do.
No, I would agree with that. I was just thinking, so if you look at, you know, the, there's one-time costs and there's ongoing costs, and the ongoing is really what starts eating you up. So just for example, when we think about a two percent raise, so we give a two percent raise this coming year, let's say it costs seven million. Let's say in the second year, we give another two percent raise, that's fourteen million. So that's seven million plus fourteen. And in the third year, we give another two percent raise, so that's another seven million, so that's twenty-one. So over a three-year period, that costs you forty-two million dollars. So if you're running in deficits, you can see how they just keep growing. And all of a sudden, you spent forty-two million dollars just on two percent raises for three years.
Yeah. It's not, it's not going to last long. That's the thing. And I don't think, you know, I don't think that folks in our district have felt that pain. They see their property taxes going up, and they're mad on about that, but they don't understand where it's going, what's happening with those dollars, and what we're having to do to continue to offer the same services with a reducing budget. So, you know, part of it's going to have to, it has to be an educate, education component. We keep saying that, but people just don't listen to us. Not us, but people don't listen to the problems of chapter forty-one educators.
Well, it's because there's not enough money in system.
Okay, any other questions? Sorry to end on such a downer.
So...
One thing about long-range financial forecasting in the school business, it's always bleak, and it's always dependent on the next legislative session.
Right, yeah.
And you have to hope for relief, and when you don't get any, it, the leak does play out. And so we do hope for some optimism in the next session.
When you guys come forward with the, you know, the budget figures with staffing, and the cost components and so forth, can you give us your recommendation on what those sort of parameters might look like about the spend pattern into the fund balance, so that we can kind of have sort of that framework, based on your recommendation?
We'll be pretty selective about what we would put in operating versus what we would ask for out of fund balance, knowing the nature of how we don't want to repeatedly tap fund balance on costs that recur.
Right.
If we can.
Especially can be some experimentation done.
So before we wrap this item up, I'd asked Ms. Bonzer if she would give the board just a little perspective on what to expect in the next round of budget dialogue, what that might look like, because we have a new CFO, we have a new superintendent, so the process might look a little different, and I wanted her to lay it out for you, so you know what to expect.
Well, and for all we know, tonight was a little different, or it was a little the same. There are a lot of us who don't even know it, so. But what I wanted to talk about is, it is my understanding that in the past, when we come back with the expenditure side, departments all go into great, great detail at the podium or whatever, about every line, and we did not anticipate going into that, that extreme depth. I mean, we are happy to provide all that information to you in depth, but rather than to have everybody stand up and go line by line, we'll probably do more summary budgets, and then be glad to answer questions as we go within departments. But we just want to make it as, we want to give you all the information you need or want, but it is a little bit, maybe a little bit laborious to go through every line by line. So, I mean, you can give us feedback on what you prefer.
Yeah. I look forward to the department budgets, because it gives us an understanding of what we're doing in the district, and I want to receive that information, and there's, you know, I forget what we call that key indicat, what is that? Key assumptions or whatever? Yeah, that stuff is important for us, I think, to understand. But if you don't want to, you know, stand at the podium and recite it, but I do want to receive that, I need to understand that.
Yeah, I'm the same. The presentation can be a high level, but I do want to see the detail.
Absolutely.
You probably don't realize how much of nerds we are.
You don't have to stand and read it to us, we'll do that in advance.
If in the, if there is sort of like an executive summary, if you will, for each area, that says, and this is what's different, you know, we're adding this sort of, you know, an investment in this area, then that gives us a great overview, and that detail we can then match up to that.
Well, and the assumptions that you use, those are important, to understand the line items, I, you know.
So they, the staff has given us this little budget timeline at your place, from March to June, so you can kind of see what to expect to occur at each of the next series of meetings related to the budget. So the final adoption will be happening on June twelfth, and then May eighth is actually now May seventh on here. So we will discuss this again, what is today, March, does it say March twentieth?
Twentieth, yeah.
Okay, so then on April four, five, six, we have the opportunity to meet with Dr. Brodmann to talk about staffing detail, and then we will have a workshop. So we're not really talking about this in the board meetings, the regular, we're going to talk about it in the work sessions, but we will adopt it in the board meeting in June. Okay, any questions about that? Okay, thank you very much, it's very helpful. I know we have some, you know, new eyes on this process, and just kind of, it'll be a lot, but you'll just, you'll get it. You'll follow along, and you'll learn a lot, and you'll ask good questions, because your eyes will be new to this process.
Yeah.
All right, next item is related to future work session topics at your place. You have a presentation of the little spreadsheet that shows you what's right now scheduled to come up, and then you've got a little spreadsheet that is a tracking mechanism that staff follows, you know, when we've said, I want this or that, where that is. Is there anything else?
So, Yoram?
So...
You have to scratch one off if you add one.
What? I'm trying to correlate this, how many, so we got the class rank GPA, that's in here. I saw the backpack weight is hidden here. How about the digital citizenship program? I didn't see if it's here or not. Is that something we're going to see?
It's on the tracking list?
No, no, it's on the tracking list.
It might not be in this particular set of months yet.
Okay.
We look at a couple of months ahead, we've got April, I think, May and June here? No, April and May, in June.
Okay. So by June, we will have just about...
Well, I believe that, I don't, I had talked with Sarah, but we're looking at the strategic plan, and merging that in with the strategic plan on infusing the digital citizenship conversation.
Fair enough. So just kind of, it would be cool to put in the, that spreadsheet, I'm actually looking at it right now, just, this is what we're thinking, we're thinking, we're waiting for the strategic plan, so.
So, yeah, I mean, as we were talking about all this stuff tonight at the funding formula, I thought maybe in November, really at the work session, I would think it would be ideal, is maybe we have kind of a primer on the current funding formula, the weights that go along with that, what potential different funding formulas there are that are maybe being proposed or talked about already, changes to the funding formula, and the thought being, and then we'll know who our representatives will be, because the election will be in November, we invite them to come to that meet, that work session as well, because we, as a group, will need to, you know, we've got new folks, and this thing is so complicated, getting back to understanding what it, what the problems are in the funding formula might help us have those conversations with our representatives, to tell them what they need to fight for to go change, which is why I think maybe it would be instructive for them to be invited to this, to that work session as well.
How about October? Before they get elected?
Well, so, my thought on November was, I don't want to go too far before the election, because then you lose the momentum of going into the legislative session. So I was thinking, either November, the December regular meeting, or even a January regular meeting, but I think even January might be too late, because it's already in session. So I don't know, I just, October.
Well, in addition to that, though, we need to also begin our legislative calendar.
So Carla has mentioned to me that it's time for us to ramp that process up, so we're going to schedule that, the beginning of that discussion for, so the legislative subcommittee will get together to begin that conversation, and, you know, put a plan together, and lay that out for you guys, and get your feedback on. So David, I'm thinking about your idea here. So you're talking about the, just to be clear, we're not talking about the staffing formula, we're talking about the school finance, the funding formula.
Yes, sorry, I was not clear, I'm talking about school finance.
That is being discussed right now, in the school finance commission work. So maybe talking about how it presently works, is that possible to explain in a primer fashion to someone who's not familiar with it?
I don't think so.
Yeah.
There is, there is something, I'm trying to remember who made this, maybe it's the TEA, School Finance 101?
Yeah, it's TEA, I think.
Yeah. I've read that thing like fifteen times, I still don't understand it.
I even wrote my own.
So maybe we need the 102.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, the other thing is, with regard to understanding the funding formula, we're going to receive a report back, we hope, by December, from the commission, correct?
Yeah.
And they may have a different idea altogether, but it would be good to understand what we operate on, but they may be talking about slapping on new taxes, or who knows what, but...
I mean, and to be, to, you know, to kind of put a finer point on it, we don't even have to really dive into the current funding formula if it's clear that something new is coming down the works. I mean, really, what the idea is to educate us as a group of seven, in terms of the language it needs, what we need to go and argue for, and fight for.
Right.
And then being able to have that arsenal to take and argue with our representatives, to get them to fight for what we need as well. So there's, I'm open to suggestions on how we do that, but I think that might be something that could be a valuable conversation as we head into the legislative session.
I think it's a very valuable conversation.
So David, the reason I suggested October, it wasn't, I wasn't being facetious, that before they get elected, because in November, you might not get the time of day. In October, you will.
Yeah, fair point.
But that would mean we'd need to invite all kinds of people.
Everyone, that's okay.
Yeah.
We got a big room here. It's not typically full.
They would come eagerly, at that point.
I actually, I think that's a great idea, because you're right, we won't get their attention, they'll blow us off in November, but maybe they'll come for some face time in October.
So, just a thought, just a thought, rather than doing that in like a board meeting kind of thing, because that's not really conducive to, they can't really engage with this, they're listening, right, because of the way that our board meetings work, what if we just have a learning, you know?
A special call.
A special call meeting, and we're, you know, teaching.
Pre-legislative.
Yeah.
But if they don't provide an audience, I don't think to Yoram's point, I think we can capitalize on the fact that there will be a natural audience.
Right.
And hands for them to shake.
Mm-hmm.
So, explain that a little bit?
We would, we need to do it during a regular meeting, because then we do have people who come, whether it's PTA council president, so they could experience the audience, which is why they'll want to come in October.
But they won't be able to ask us questions?
Right, it won't be a dialogue.
Or they won't be able to, I mean, it's more of a show, to me, at that point, it's a, you know, I was here, and then I left, you know, but I got a picture.
Never seen that before.
I, you know, I'd like the opportunity to...
Have a dialogue.
I would, I would expect, quite frankly, we would get an audience with that.
Yeah. The meeting is still an open meeting.
Yeah, I think we would. We would invite an audience.
Yeah, I was going to say inviting PTA and key communicators, have that maybe be a key communicator moment.
Yeah. Okay, so let's continue this. So Carla, what if we used this opportunity to try a town hall-ish sort of experience, where people could call in, they could send email questions, you know, it's like an online sort of thing, like, interactive, different?
Boy, that's, it's going to be a complex topic, though. They're not going to have this.
And we won't be able to control who wishes to engage in dialogue, it may not be the candidates.
Right. Okay, live audience. Just throw it out there.
Let's figure it out, let's figure out something.
A way to teach others, and inform others to help us out, so. Let's noodle on that a little bit. We've got some time to think about it, you know, staff can think about it, you can think about it.
Where are you thinking about hosting?
Where?
When?
When? October.
Before the...
October.
October is our target start for the last couple of sessions, anyway.
Okay.
I mean, that makes the calendar sense, even if you want earlier, October certainly would be a good target.
I mean, we want to position ourselves as a resource, right?
Right.
And, you know, we've tried the field trip idea, you know, to teach about pre-K, and we went to a pre-K school. Let's make this topic something along those lines.
You know, for every, every person who wants to represent us, or be our senator, we are going to be the biggest district in their district, the biggest school district in their district. And I think that for them not to be sitting here while we are sharing the issues we have with finance, that's, that's probably going to be pretty detrimental for them in the elections. So you've got a captive audience there.
Yeah.
They're going to be sitting here, I remember in previous years, we had those conversations, even when we went down to Austin, and they didn't know some of the things.
Oh, yeah. Well, I think another point to the fund, the funding issue that you're talking about discussing and understanding, the primer, I think we ought to have a crosswalk between the TEA's reporting and the LBB.
Oh, yeah, let's definitely do that.
I mean, the idea is to get, one of the ideas is to educate them, so they know what to do for us. And they have to understand the problem first, and all of the nuances of the problem, before they can go down and fight for us.
But before they start talking numbers, I want them to be talking the right numbers.
Yeah.
And that would be that crosswalk between LBB and TEA's numbers.
So, you know, since we're talking about informing and such, you know, we're trying to inform our public, we want to inform all of our, represent all of our policymakers as well, we've got our budget scheduled here at every work session that we just talked about. So it would be a great opportunity, why don't we invite our officials, policymakers, and those who are wanting to be policymakers, to come and participate, listen to our sessions? and those who are wanting to be policymakers to come and participate, listen to our, our sessions?
Then let's make it the long meeting in April, the department budgets. I'm sorry, that was a joke.
We really need to work on our messaging. I know that we did the ad in the Plano's to our courier, but we're still not there with the elevator message that I can give to friends and neighbors. And as much as we want to talk with our legislators about the complexity, that's not what they'll be able to listen for. So we really need to push ourselves, much like, I guess, a litigator. You really have to hone it down to the points you need to make. We need to work on that still.
I agree. And that's sort of, I mean, that's why I started kind of thinking with the primer, you know, boil it down. So that, you know, educate these, these particular individuals. But then there is an education component also with the public. And we can work on that in the fall as well, doing, it doesn't just have to be one session. It can be sessions that we can individually go and deliver the same primer at PTA meetings or schedule HOA meetings or something like, I mean, but, you know, that's part of, I think part of our group of seven focus should be to get that message out into the public. Because I guarantee you, property taxes and school finance are going to be the number one and two topics in the next legislative session. And everybody's going to be mad about both of them.
I think the article you shared on Facebook about the Fort Worth legislator or was it Judge? That was a nice presentation of the problem. So we want to start there and just see how we can take that into it.
I think there are two issues. One is the mechanic side and that's the primer that we're talking about. And the other one is the public opinion side, which is the elevator speech. I think we need both. So the people who understand mechanics need to know enough in order to know how to, what to do with the public opinion. So there, there is a survey that was released yesterday that talks about what the public supports with regard to school funding. And I think those are the elevator points.
Who conducted the survey?
So it was funded by a group of philanthropists, the Texas Education Grantmakers Advocacy Consortium. And they, is it Basilees, is that how you say it? They did, remember they did our bond polling? So they hired them to do this polling, this, this research. So that was released yesterday. And that could be the foundation of some elevator speech material that's, that's easy to use.
How did we get that survey?
I'll send it to you.
Okay.
It's, it would, it's public. Austin American wrote about it. I have it. I'll send it to you.
We also have the contact of the gentleman, Mike or Michael Basilees, that helped us before.
Okay. Okay, so do we want to issue as particular kind of a formal invitation to folks to come to our board meetings, to our budget sessions?
I would make them an offer they can refuse. I think the invitation needs to be probably pretty public, yeah? And that it says, you're, you're running for an office. This is the biggest school district in your legislative district. We are going to share the issues that we have, the educated and so on. It would be great to see you there.
And, and to read or view this meeting prior to coming? Because I think what we discussed about staffing allocations and revenue projections is so important to that budget process, but they weren't here tonight.
So how, what, tell me a little bit more about how you think that public issuance would like technically happen?
I don't know.
We could work on a plan. We could work on a plan for that.
Okay.
And share it through.
Okay.
Ms. Bondser and through you, too.
In the last election cycle, the Collin County Business Alliance got very involved in trying to promote, you know, get out the vote message. And they leveraged, they worked, they didn't work with the school districts, but they looked, worked with city council. And I wonder if they're going to be very involved again in this election cycle? Because the Collin County Business Alliance, they did the, they did a lot of education about who was voting and all that kind of stuff. I wonder if they would be a good partner or a resource or something to join forces with in this endeavor in some way? And just helping get out that word. They share it with their employees, talking, you know, I know it's more of a bigger.
About school finance and such? So there are some efforts underway right now statewide about that. One is starting, one is tomorrow and I'm participating in that. It's through the chambers, Dallas Regional Chamber, so, and then there's one in Austin. So a lot of that messaging will be coming through the business community to engage the business community in those conversations. So these convenings are happening across the state for informing purposes. And we'll, the first one is tomorrow. We'll see how that goes. We're talking about doing one up here in Plano, in Collin County also. This will be playing out up until, you know, the legislative session statewide to deliver the elevator message, Tammy, that you're talking about, based upon the data that was, you know, surfaced through the polling and trying to inform people. It could be CCBA that's a partner up here. It could be the chamber. I'm not sure yet. Yeah. So fortunately, those things are happening. I wouldn't say they're get out the vote efforts, but they're informing efforts to inform and engage. Yeah. And that's happening through philanthropy that's paying for that, those kinds of efforts. All right, so we had lots of discussion about future work topics. And are we concluded on that?
Actually, I want to just do a thank you from looking at the calendar. It appears that three of the next four meetings actually have student learning explicitly listed. I'm assuming that also goes into student achievement of their learning. So I'm excited by that. And I want to give a shout out to some Plano West grads who are representing well. Texas A&amp;M basketball, Sweet 16, Tyler Davis and DJ Hoag. They showed the nicest shot of those two young men at the end of the game where they beat North Carolina State, which they weren't supposed to, just the camaraderie. And so I think we could be.
Texas Tech, Texas Tech.
Okay, one more. One more. Just, just a little observation on Tyler, who was at an A&amp;M basketball game. And, you know, he's six foot 10. There was one of the coach's sons, a little bitty guy, who was wearing Tyler's jersey number, number 34. And at the end, when the Aggies link arms and do our, our forehand, he was linking arms with this little bitty guy. And I thought, wow, that's a great testament to how we did a little bit of helping raise him. So Thursday at 6:37 PM, next game.
And, you know, since we're talking about agenda items, I think Carla's team is working with the Lady Wildcats to bring them to figure out when they can come so that we can recognize their accomplishment. We did that.
As well as the coach.
She's coaching.
So we can recognize both. So hopefully we can get that done. And, you know, we'll do that when it works for them.
Yeah, because the West boys actually won in 2015.
That's right. We brought them, so we'll do the same.
We're on it.
Okay, thank you.
And Tyler was shaking his head as well.
She lost more than 50 pounds to reshape to be an NBA player.
So Randy, we ended on a high note.
There you go.
All right, with no further business, this work session of the Board of Presidents is adjourned.